Alrighty, good afternoon, everyone. It is 5:30, so we're gonna call this meeting to order. Great to see everyone. Hello, San Bernardino. Just wanna give a shout out to our community and all our staff and our students. We're closing in on the end of this year. It's going by quickly, and boy, I'm sure a lot of us are glad because we're looking forward to that summer break, so. We'll start off on 1.2, Pledge of Allegiance. And today, the pledge will be led by Ms. Glover's 4th grade class at Warm Springs Elementary School. So if we could all rise, let's do the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you to Ms. Glover and her 4th grade class at Warm Springs Elementary School. It's always great to see you on those videos. We will move on to 1.3, Approval of the Agenda.
The agenda's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion or items be pulled?
Alright, I see none. Oh, it was motion by Vice President Tillman and seconded by Dr. Flores. There was no discussion, so we'll go ahead and vote on the agenda. Alrighty, agenda is approved as drafted. We'll move on to 1.4, Inspirational Message, and this meeting is Ms. Myra Savios. Ms. Savios.
Thank you so much, President Dr. Scott Wyatt. Well, welcome, everybody. Good evening, board members, cabinet. So good to see you guys. So yes, today it is my turn to give the inspirational message to all of us this evening. And as I have been reflecting on what I could possibly share with you all that will inspire you, I thought, man, am I in need of some inspiring myself right about now. One of the core values that I shared with you all in my first board meeting on December 15, 2020 was that I would be transparent. That is all I have done thus far, is be as transparent as possible with anything happening in the district and with the decisions I make, because I owe you all that much as a public elected official. I owe you all honesty and transparency with my why of doing things. I owe you all explanations. When I signed up for this position, I recognized that I now answered to you all. I do not take for granted for one second my seat on this board. Many would say that that is one of my biggest flaws, that I care too much. I would say it's actually one of my greatest attributes. I cannot look at something in the face, know it is wrong, and look the other way as if I had never seen it. I will bear the consequences of me being up on this podium and making the decisions that I make every single time. I take ownership and responsibility for those decisions. I will share with you all now some sentiments I've been experiencing for the last few months. For the last few months, but especially at this moment in time, I feel extremely disappointed in all of us. I feel devastated, and I feel worn down, to be honest. I feel disappointed in us as a board. We could and should be doing better for our students instead. It feels like we're constantly focusing on other things and not doing what is best for students. Well, I guess it doesn't matter, right? Because those who have a voice will speak up, and they shall be heard. It is those that do not have a voice or that have not found theirs who worry me. Those, my friends, are our students, and oftentimes our most disadvantaged and vulnerable students, like our students with disabilities, our foster youth, our English learners, and our economically disadvantaged students. Sadly, and often, one student may face all of those challenges at once, therefore making them four times disadvantaged. Furthermore, often than not, students in those situations will not show up here, to this boardroom, to that podium, and tell us, "I need your help." Many times, not even those students' parents or caregivers, because they themselves have been disadvantaged and are also vulnerable, because in many cases, the system has failed them too. It is great to help individual people when they come to us for their individual and unique needs. But what we also need to highly focus on are our systems that will help as many students as we can, because 90-plus percent of our students meet at least one of those categories, as previously stated. So it is our job to help all our students by creating systems that will target all of them and not focus on board members' pet projects that help one group of students in a menial fashion, and not to the degree that we could and should be helping them. And that is by giving them the best chance to succeed in this current world with this current economy. Not every student will choose college, that's right, but we should at least be preparing them to make that decision for themselves by focusing on ensuring that they know how to read and write by the time that they get to high school, and otherwise, hope that they don't drop out if they have not then, or will have encountered problems maybe with law enforcement in some way. We cannot afford to have that much need in a community and focus on individual needs only, and then advertise ourselves for helping people on an individual basis while hurting others. Again, we need systems in place such as an MTSS structure, like the Targeted Support for Schools Progress, or better known for TSSP, that Dr. Menares and her team were working on through the Continuous Improvement Department, and like the systems Mr. Irvin wants to put in place. But we have not allowed him to do so. All I hear are excuses as to why this cannot happen. "We don't have the money." "Oh, wait, we have a lot of money, but we can't use it for those things." I cannot settle for that. Our students are way too valuable for me to take those excuses as legitimate reasons as to why we cannot move forward with implementing those systems. We have a high-need student population and community, so we need to focus on maximizing the services we offer and streamlining them so that we may benefit the most students in an equitable fashion with accountability. Again, I feel extremely disappointed. I feel devastated. I feel worn down. I see our staff sometimes with similar semblance. The ambiance in the air sometimes is of defeat. The good people in our district sometimes leave because they recognize they will not be able to move forward with the work, because their bosses will serve as an obstacle for them. I don't want to be an obstacle for you. You need strong leaders who will need to stand for corruption, but how can we have that if we may be corrupt ourselves? When we publicly admit to violating board policies, when we violate our own policies, what happens behind closed doors, then, if we publicly do that? How can people trust us? I don't blame you for not trusting us. I also feel hopeful, though. We have an upcoming school board election this November. That gives me hope. We also have great people in our district who are still here and working hard every single day. I tell you out there, stay strong. Don't give up on us, or the system, because you and I, us, we are the system. We make the system. And if you give up, the system will gobble us up, and it will spit us back out. That is why it is extremely important to define culture, as I once stated before up here, or it will define you. And I think it already has in many ways, but we have the ability to change it. I have not given up on you or us, and I will continue to work hard openly and honestly and as transparently as possible. Thank you.
Thank you for your inspirational message, Ms. Savios. We will move on now to 5:45, Special Presentations and Recognition. 2.1, Resolution Recognizing May as Asian Pacific American Heritage Month, and we will have Dr. Flores read this one. Thank you, Dr. Flores.
Thank you, Mr. President. I defer to you.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Flores. I'll be more than happy to read this one. Whereas in 1978, President Jimmy Carter signed into law Asian Pacific American Heritage Week to be celebrated during the first 10 days of May. And whereas in 1992, Congress passed law designating the entire month of May as Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. And whereas May was originally chosen to commemorate the immigration of the first Japanese to the United States on May 7, 1843, and to mark the anniversary of the completion of the Transcontinental Railroad on May 10, 1869, of which the majority of the workers who laid the tracks were Chinese immigrants. And whereas Asian Pacific American Heritage Month, which encompasses all of the Asian continent and the Pacific Islands, celebrates and pays tribute to the contributions made by generations of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders to government, industry, and commerce, agriculture, science, literature, and the arts. Therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District designates May 2022 as Asian Pacific American Heritage Month and joins with all Americans in celebrating this rich and diverse culture and that appropriate lessons about the contributions of Asian Pacific Americans take place in our schools, not only during this month, but throughout the school year.
Moved.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? Alright, motion carries. Thank you very much, Dr. Flores, for the opportunity. Resolution, 2.2, excuse me, Resolution Recognizing May as Labor History Month, and it will be Vice President Danny Tillman.
Thank you, President Dr. Scott Wyatt. Whereas May is Labor History Month in California as signed into law by Governor Jerry Brown in 2012, whereas labor history reveals the vital role of labor unions in the establishment of the eight-hour workday, the 40-hour work week, unemployment insurance, workers' compensation, old-age pensions, protection for the sick, equal employment opportunity, and prohibition of child labor, as well as legislation banning discrimination in employment. And whereas labor history also shows that American workers were in the forefront of the effort to make free public education available to all children regardless of geography or social and economic status, and whereas the San Bernardino City Unified School District through its linked learning and other efforts is strengthening the labor force and economic vitality of the cities of San Bernardino and Highland by ensuring that students graduate prepare to succeed in college and careers. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District hereby declares May 2022 to be Labor History Month, and schools are encouraged to commemorate this month with the appropriate educational exercises that make students aware of the role the labor movement has played in shaping California and the United States of America. So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Vice President Tillman. It's been moved and properly seconded by Dr. Rogers. Any discussion? Alright, let's go ahead and vote. Alrighty, motion carries. We'll move on to 2.3, Resolution Recognizing May as Williams Syndrome Awareness Month, and our reader will be Dr. Gwen Doughty Rogers.
Thank you. Whereas May is Williams Syndrome Awareness Month, a time dedicated to raising awareness about the rare genetic condition that affects an estimated 30,000 people in the United States, and whereas Williams Syndrome is often characterized by a host of lifelong medical and developmental challenges, and every person diagnosed with Williams Syndrome is unique. But these individuals are often, also often have highly social personalities, striking verbal skills, and an affinity for music, and whereas the Williams Syndrome Association has been working since 1982 to increase international awareness and bring valuable resources to families touched by this disorder, and whereas on April 10, 2017, North Park Elementary student Jonathan Martinez, who was born with Williams Syndrome, tragically died in a senseless act of violence. Therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District hereby proclaims May 2022 as Williams Syndrome Awareness Month, and takes this opportunity to honor the memory of Jonathan Martinez and remember him as a happy child who was social, friendly, and endearing. So moved.
Alright, it's been moved by Dr. Gwen Doughty Rogers, seconded by Mr. Tillman. Any discussion? Alright, let's go ahead and vote. Alright, motion carries. We'll move on to 2.4, Resolution and Recognition of School Nutrition Employee Week, and it will be Ms. Abigail Rosas Medina.
Thank you so much. Whereas May 2 through May the 6, 2022, is School Nutrition Employee Week, and May 6, 2022, is School Lunch Hero Day. And whereas meals at schools are essential part of every school day, and the nutrition services staffs is committed to providing health food nutritious meals to district students, and whereas nutrition employees are the unsung heroes of education who make sure students have full stomachs and have the feel they need to concentrate on learning throughout the school day, and whereas these employees also help to nurture children through their daily interaction and support. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District declares May 2 through May the 6, 2022, as School Nutrition Employee Week, and expresses its deep appreciation to these valuable employees and commands them on their dedication to the children of our community. So moved.
Alrighty, it's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? Alrighty, motion carries. We'll move on to 3.0, Public Comments. 3.1 will be receiving public comments. This is the only time the public will have an opportunity to address the board on items not on the agenda and within their subject matter jurisdiction, such as district policies, procedures, programs, services, or fiscal matters. At this time, we are still accepting comments via Zoom, and registration form is required and available for 24 hours prior to all scheduled Board of Education meetings and closes at 4:30 PM on the day of the meeting. In-person public comments will be taken first. Participants speaking via Zoom are reminded that any inappropriate language or images will forfeit their registration. They will be immediately removed from the meeting. Public comments are limited to five minutes per person. Six or more people who wish to speak on one topic will be provided no more than 30 minutes total. Speakers are cautioned that under California law, no person is immune from liability for making intentionally false or defamatory comments regarding any person simply because these comments are made at a public meeting. Alrighty, our first public comment and speaker will be Sonia Olivares. Welcome.
Hello.
Good evening, Ms. Olivares.
Good evening.
Push the button right there in front of you. There you go.
It's on. Hello?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Hi, we come before you to bring attention to you. A matter that happened at Mount Vernon Elementary on Friday to our daughter. We feel that the disciplinary action that took place against her assailants was not fair, so we come before you to bring this to your attention. According to your handbook, there are a lot of disciplinary actions that should be taken based off of rules that are broken. These rules were broken by her assailants, and they're still in school. My child is in fear to go back to school because those boys are still at school. I come to bring this to your attention. I've already filed every complaint that I need to file. I was with Ms. Warren today down at the Positive Youth Development Center. I need to know what can be done for my daughter. Is there a way to overturn this?
I guess what we want to know is that somebody's gonna be held accountable. My nine-year-old was beat by three little boys, and that day, instead of them being suspended, being anything, we got the call, I got asked to leave the school premises with my daughter, because they could tell I was upset. My daughter's traumatized. She flinches at night. She whimpers at night. She's never been like that. I go and I ask them, "I want to see counseling. She needs to see something." Okay, here's the resources. I call, "Well, we only cover you if you have Medicare or if you're on government assistance." How is that fair to me? So I told them, "Okay, what can I do? Okay, do you have insurance?" "Yeah." So I have to go through my personal provider, pay my own thing, while the kids, the parents, not, they went about their business. No consequences at all. Why? Because they're third graders. And in the book, you guys are cut at third grade, nothing happens to them. They weren't suspended. Their solution to my daughter being back in school was she could come hang out with the kindergartners. We'll make sure that they don't come in contact. She could stay in the office with us. Why should she be in fear? Why should she not be allowed to play recess? My daughter plays softball. Her softball sisters are here supporting her to show that she's not a crybaby. She's not a fearful kid that sits there and is just making this up. These three little boys grabbed her by the ponytail to the point her rubber band fell off. They started hitting her and hitting her, and nobody did anything. And I want to know who can be held accountable? All I keep hearing is, "We have procedures. We have procedures. We have standards. We have to do this. We have to do that." But I keep asking everybody, "Okay, you guys keep telling me you guys can't do anything to them. Okay, what happens? Who's held accountable? Who can be held accountable?" I wish and I hope that one of you guys can answer that for me, because we've exhausted everything. We asked everybody to come help us, and everybody that supports Ariani and knows how strong she is is here to support her. And I really hope I can get an answer from one of you guys today, and not just, "We're gonna look into it," because that's all I've been hearing since Friday. On Friday, the assistant principal told me, "Principal isn't here. We'll look into it. We'll get back to you Monday. School police was called. They were involved. We'll get back to you on Monday." Monday came, well, we haven't talked to school police. School police, well, we haven't talked to the school. Nobody's getting on board. Somebody needs to be held accountable. It's not fair for my daughter. It's not. She's a nine-year-old little girl. What would have happened if these were teenage boys? 15 or 16-year-old teenage boys surrounding a girl?
I'll make, listen, just make sure you give all your information to Mrs. Ballintag right there, and then I'll have Dr. Menares, and she's the Deputy Superintendent of Schools. She will be reaching out to you first thing in the morning, and then we'll take it from there. So we definitely will be getting ahold of you. And apologize for that inconvenience, and again, just be patient. We will definitely get back with you. And then also, Mrs. Ballintag is my administrative, I mean, my executive assistant, and she'll make sure that I'll reach out to you tomorrow as well in the morning, just to get some more detail.
And Bianca Moreno, counsel for them. I think our questions are, what necessarily is the policy? Are you confirming that because the students who are not negating, you know, that they did this, and the principal is not negating that this was committed, that there is no repercussions? The principal herself has already confirmed that these children will not face suspension, will not be put up for expulsion, will not suffer any type of consequences, because according to her, it was a first offense. I'm not sure. I'm sure most of you are parents. I'm a parent. I'm a coach, and there is no, there should be no allowance for any offense. This should be a zero-violence policy, a zero-tolerance for this type of offense. This little girl was dragged to the floor, beaten, punched, pinched, while others cheered her on to be raped at nine years old on school campus. And I think that that is horrendous. The school's response is abhorrent and reprehensible. The aide, as according to my information, told her to stop crying. It wasn't that bad. This is a school aide on campus who immediately was present following the attack. This type of response is not only unacceptable, it opens you to liability. It really does. It opens you to liability. It's as a parent, as somebody involved in the community, as somebody who does so well in school, it's extremely upsetting that this is the response, that this is how it's being handled, that it's being minimized, that it's being shoved to the side, and that it's not given the priority that it needs. For these parents, for peace of mind, I will let you know that they are in the process of letting other parents know that this is the response that's being tended to for your school and for your school district. And I'm sure that this is not the reputation that the school district wants to have, but I think it's important in order for changes to be made, for there to be awareness, and for a need to be shown as to what type of action needs to be had on your behalf, on your principal's behalf, and on everybody's behalf that's involved. What else did we name? So I understand that, you know, your executive assistant and perhaps your Deputy Superintendent will make contact with the parents tomorrow, but I'm also hoping that that is a conversation that's going to be had with the principal, with the aide, and that a report and an investigation can be done expeditiously, because we are expecting that.
Alrighty, and Ms. Olivares, I believe we have a few questions for you and I'm guessing your husband.
Ex-husband.
Ex-husband, well, okay. My apologies.
If I could just respond before the board, just to the parents so that you're aware.
Yes, you may. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So to your original question of where's the accountability and all of that, we have to, we will for certain be doing an investigation, so I want to ease you on that. We have to know more details. So not that what you're telling us isn't the truth, but we have to do our due diligence and understand what happened, and then work with the principal to make sure that the appropriate consequences are put into place. Many times when we develop the guidebooks, it is, there are those circumstances that are beyond what the guidebook says, right? So we've got that discipline piece, and you saw it, but based off of what you're sharing, we need to look at it from a different lens. But we have to do our due diligence on that, and I ask that you allow us to do that. I thank you for bringing it forward. I'm looking at your daughter, and I see my daughter and her, and I can't imagine what it must feel like. So I'm sorry, sweetheart. I'm sorry that you're afraid to go to school, because that's not okay. School's supposed to be a very happy place. So we're gonna fix it, okay? We're gonna make sure. What I also want to share with you is that we will not be sharing with you the consequences for any other child, just like we won't be sharing with any other parent, anything for your child. That's just our responsibility in terms of protecting. But we do take this concern very seriously. We are not okay with it whatsoever. We will be reaching out to the principal and working with her and working with the staff there to make sure that they possibly need some additional training. So I will have, I will be reaching out to you for certain next, tomorrow, and we'll schedule something up. Dr. Rodriguez is over our Student Services, and so she, Positive Youth Development is under her, and so you'll be hearing from us.
Great. I've already filed a parent complaint with Mrs. Warren, so that's already in. You can see that tomorrow morning. She already put that together. I had confirmation from her.
So I will have, I will be reaching out to you for certain next, tomorrow, and we'll schedule something up. Dr. Rodriguez is over our Student Services, and so she, Positive Youth Development is under her, and so you'll be hearing from us.
Great. I've already filed a parent complaint with Mrs. Warren, so that's already in, you can see that tomorrow morning. She already put that together. I had confirmation from her. We have a police report with the school police. That's already in effect. I've been doing my due diligence as well.
Sounds like it. And so the fact that you've had to go this far, apologies.
I'm making it a point.
Yeah, but I understand. Mama, you're the mama, right? Yeah, I got it. Okay, so we will, we'll be, so thank you, Dr. Wyatt, for the opportunity.
Thank you, Dr. Menares and Ms. Olivares. Just for clarification for myself, and I apologize to you, I'm sorry that your daughter had to go through this, and I know this board wants a zero policy on behavior such as this. Absolutely unacceptable. I'm getting emotional myself. So these were young men, young boys that...
Eight and nine-year-old boys, third grade level. It's just, it's just really sad that in the handbook, the consequences only warrant for fourth through 12th grades. So because they weren't a year older, they're not subject to expulsion. That gets thrown out the window. So I want to see that anything can be overridden. There are higher people above higher people, and this is why we're here.
And I will say, I do work in education myself and very similar positions as folks up here during my day job. And there are different ed codes that state that. However, I am in agreement with you that, you know, there are exceptional cases.
There can be exceptions to the rules. I agree.
That's why I'm asking, I'm not asking for names or anything because of confidentiality.
Correct.
But I, you know, one, I believe in chivalry, you know, boys and young men should not, should not be touching ladies or girls for any matter. So that bothersome to me, and I'm looking at it right now. Again, no person, boy or girl, male or female, should have to go through such an experience in school. So again, on behalf of the board and board president, I'm sorry your daughter had to go through that. Dr. Flores?
I just wanted to acknowledge your concern and your rage. And Mija, I'm so sorry that that happened to you, and I know that you're afraid, and I know that, you know, that should never have happened to you, okay? It's not right. It's not right to be, get beat up. You know, just to clarify, same thing happened to my daughter when she was a second grader, and I was outraged. And, and, you know, I empathize with you, and like Dr. Wyatt said, you know, we'll follow through and so that it doesn't happen to you again or anybody else.
Anyone else.
And make sure that that doesn't happen, okay, Mejita? Are you, are you okay? You're okay? Okay, Mejita. And I, I'm, thank you for coming. And, you know, in this era of violence, where women are, have to suffer violence from men, it's not good, you know? And stay strong, Mejita. And, you know, it wasn't right, okay? All right? And thank you for coming. It's important that you're here. Gracias.
One more thing, just if you guys could look into that policy, especially by seeking psychology or counseling for her. Realistically, that's not right. It shouldn't be right. I shouldn't have to call a number and then tell me, well, we can't help you out. Are you on Medicaid? No, well, we can't help you out. There should be changes to that, especially for something like that because you guys have no clue how hard it is to feel her shaking arms, right?
Thank you, Dr. Flores.
We hear you. We hear you.
Ms. Sevales?
Well, thank you for coming out. I won't say, you know, what has already been repeated. I just want to say thank you for coming and, you know, just apologize to, you know, all of you and especially you, okay? You're very brave for coming over here and letting us know, okay? And it's not going to go unheard, okay? We've heard you, and we're going to, we're going to fix it. It's going to get better. And if it doesn't, which it should, you come back, okay?
I will be.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to make a phone call.
I apologize. We have one more light. Come on, I'm so sorry.
But it's more of a comment. You know, I, first of all, again, like the board member said, I do appreciate you coming down. I think it's important for us to hear, and other parents that might be seeing us as well, it's okay for you to come and speak to us because this is where we hear it, and we have to make sure that we address it. But I do want to ask the school district, as we move forward, to, as the father mentioned, when we, when we get counseling services, we have to make sure that we're providing it for all students regardless of having insurance and no insurance. So if we can look into that as well, I want to move forward with that. Thank you.
For the record, we do have insurance. I think our point across the board was if she was a victim here, why would we have to be the ones accountable for it? Why isn't the school doing anything else for us? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Olivares, and trust me, and I say, we hear you loud and clearly on that. Thank you.
Is there any way in order for her to return back to school so that it's not detrimenting her education any further? She's already been out for two days. For her to feel safe, she doesn't want the boys there, is there anything that can be done during this time?
Ms. Olivares, I see Dr. Menares going around. I'm sure she's going to come talk to you right now.
Thank you.
Thank you for asking. All right, our next public comments, or comments, I have two people on here, are Roxana Sanchez and Anna Batista. Come on up. Alrighty, good evening, welcome.
Good evening. Can you guys hear me?
No, if you can, I don't know if you can get a little closer, if it's on, it's a little bit hard. You could take, and if you want to take your mask off, you may, if you want. If you feel comfortable.
Good evening, everyone. Can you guys hear me?
There we go, that's fine.
Okay. Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Roxana Sanchez. I am here alongside one of my team members, Anna Batista, on behalf of our overall team. We are a team of social work students from Cal State San Bernardino. We are conducting, we're conducting a community advocacy project for a social policy course. There are findings we decided to focus on the community needs of Moscoi. These needs were discovered in a previous meeting that we had with Principal Jamison of Moscoi Elementary School. Our team also conducted surveys to provide to the community. As we all know, we are dealing with post-pandemic challenges. We have been aware that, made aware that teachers are burnt out and our students are falling behind academically. For these reasons, Principal Jamison expressed tutoring as an extreme necessity. With that being said, our team has decided to focus on this specific educational need.
There has been an initiated plan to collaborate with Baker Family Learning Center, Cal State San Bernardino's Office of Student Engagement, and Moscoi Elementary. Our team seeks to gather volunteers from Cal State San Bernardino, Moscoi community members, as well as the school board in providing tutoring services. As for our next steps, the remainder of our team meet with the Office of Students Engagement at CSUSB today, and we also have consistent communication with Baker Family Learning Center, and will proceed to complete the necessary documents in seeking approval to uphold our advocacy goal. Finally, we are pursuing to bring our parties together in providing a secure, communicated, and contractual agreement for the students and community of Moscoi. We understand that these resources will not be provided overnight, but by working together, we can provide better opportunities for our children and families. We can thank you, we thank you for providing, for giving our team the opportunity to speak with you this evening, and we look forward to continuing to advocate for Moscoi Elementary School. Thank you very much for your time.
Alrighty, thank you very much for being here. All right, our next public speaker is Andrea Schindler. Welcome.
Good evening, members of the board and the cabinet. I'm Andrea Schindler, parent and teacher in San Bernardino City Unified School District. Over the past several months, we've been coming to speak to you regarding the pending vaccine mandates. During those meetings, I've heard you, Dr. Wyatt, give your story about why you chose to vaccinate. So I thought I would take this opportunity to tell you my story. When the vaccine first rolled out, I wasn't too sure about it, given that it was still in the experimental stage. But I thought at worst case scenario, if it didn't work, they would go back to the drawing board and make something new. I never imagined that people would get hurt and even die from it, and that still we would continue administering it or even go so far as to mandate it. I was not amongst the first who could get it, but I had older family members who started getting their vaccines. One of my very close family members experienced an extreme respiratory adverse reaction after her first dose, so bad that the doctor said that we couldn't get her the second dose. We were not told about the VAERS system, and oddly, at that time, I was more concerned, how can we get her the second dose? Shortly after this experience, my best friend went to donate her COVID plasma and was told that they would not accept her plasma if she'd received her vaccine. That was a huge red flag to me. And so I thought, maybe when the school year started. Then our daughter had an adverse reaction, and once again, we weren't told about the VAERS system or the possibility of these adverse reactions. After that, many of the people that I knew who had gotten the vaccine started to get COVID over the summer. At the start of the year, my family member, they finally caved, I don't know how, and gave her her second dose, and I was still relieved, oddly, except for that two days later, she was complaining of being nauseous, and my other family member talked her into going into the hospital. She doesn't go to hospitals, but when she went, she was on the verge of a stroke. And then I got it again in December, and I was asymptomatic. Now, if I had gotten my shot, they would have said that I was asymptomatic because I got the vaccine, as opposed to the fact that I still had my antibodies from the first time I had it a year prior, and I had just had my antibodies taken, so the antibody test taken. The more research I did, the more I looked into it, I could not in good moral conscience with the convictions that I believed God placed in my heart through the experiences He had led me through, I absolutely cannot move forward with getting this shot until there's honesty and transparency in the information provided to patients, until there's no more incentivization of COVID protocols, until pharmaceutical companies are held accountable. I can't contribute to a system built upon this kind of deception and greed. So that's my story. We understand that the vaccine mandate has been put off to no earlier than July 2023. However, for the past school year, you've held our future, our children's futures, our livelihood in the palm of your hands. While we worried, wondered, and made plans for worst-case scenarios, day after day, there you sat idly, waiting for all this to play out. Pretty easy to do from the comfort of your thrones. Doesn't affect you. So why worry how this injustice infects and was affecting hundreds of employees, parents, students, and their families? Throughout history, there's been many who have sat idly by as witnesses, not wanting to stir waves, but I'm here to tell you as I live and breathe that even if I had gotten the shot, I would have still been here, week after week, month after month, fighting against this injustice. If we have not questioned forced-placing experimental medical trials to which there is no liability for companies who have created them, on people through coercion and threats, and if we haven't learned anything about segregating people and utilizing discriminatory acts against individuals based on a societal determined status, then what have we learned? I hope I don't sound insulting. I do hope to make you uncomfortable. So uncomfortable that maybe you'll do what's right. You'll come down from your thrones, and you'll join us in this fight. Maybe you're hoping, once this is all over, we'll forget, but let me reassure you, we won't. Because if you turn a blind eye to this, what could be next? All I know is that when this is said and done, my children, our children, will be able to say that we stood up against these acts of injustice that have been happening all around us and threatened upon us. We've watched our brothers and sisters in law enforcement, healthcare, and fire be unfairly let go. We've witnessed teachers who were forced to distance learning or had their exemptions denied and let go. We've encountered families who gave in to threats and lost their families or a family member to a vaccine injury. The stories go on and on. So when we fight, we fight for us all, and our children and generations thereafter will know that we did. And what will they say of all of you? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schindler. Alrighty, our next public comment and speaker is Ms. Negretti. Welcome, Ms. Negretti.
Good evening, board members. I share the same sentiments as Andrea, but I was really looking forward to seeing some of the resolutions that we had asked for, agendized. And, you know, you've been reminded over and over, you know, some of you are up for reelection. It's nice to see that some of you are lowering your standards with the mask when it comes to going to outside, you know, public functions. So that's, that's good to see that you're relying on the God-given gift. So again, if you could put those resolutions, another one is, we ask for fairness. So you paid for the town hall meeting to reinforce the vaccines and the masking. However, it's been at least three different board meetings since that was requested of you to bring the fairness of the other side, and nothing has been agendized. So I would like to see that there. And because that would only bring your fairness and equity, and right now, there's really no excuse to not have the other side when we already have the adverse effect reactions. There are there, and it's real. This is not something made up, as many people had said long ago. So we ask that you put that here. Because you also made it such a point to speak about when it came down to not no longer wearing the mask, that there would also be punished, so if the kids who chose to not wear the mask would not be bullying those who decided to wear the mask. However, it was completely the other side, and I will have my child share that experience with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Negretti. Alrighty, our next public speaker and comment is Ms. Negretti's child. And this should only be audio, please. No image. I don't know if we could do that, but if we can do that, please, thank you. Welcome.
Well, during class one time, I took off my mask, and some kid made a comment about the way that I looked, and it really hurt. And then he proceeded to make other comments about other students who took off theirs after the mandate was lifted, and those kids were so offended that they put their mask back on. And it's just continued. Whenever a kid takes their mask off, they always make comments about the way that they look or anything.
Mr. President, can I ask a question?
Were you done, or? I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure. I was waiting, and I apologize, I have a hard time hearing, so I didn't know if you were, you couldn't hear either. Sorry if you asked us something, but I didn't really hear the last part, and maybe, Dr. Rodriguez, you did.
She's making a statement about what happened in her classroom.
Okay, I heard that part. Thank you. Dr. Rodriguez?
Ready, thank you for coming today. It was very brave of you to come and speak, and especially to talk in front of, like, a lot of grownups, so thank you for doing that. I just wanted to ask you, and maybe I'll ask you afterwards, what school you go to? You don't have to tell me right now. I'll walk over, and you can tell me what it is because I don't want to broadcast it on YouTube. So I'll talk to you afterwards, just to find out what campus you go to so that I can look into it.
And Dr. Wyatt, in addition to that, we would like to know what were the protocols because we were very adamant about making sure that protocols were put in place, that all of our educators, our principals, everyone knew this, and that was the big concern that we had, and not that it should linger, but that it was to be addressed immediately. So we need to know that. And again, just as we would have said to any other student, we're sorry that that happened to you, you know, and we are here and should be making those decisions to stop those things that affect you from doing what you need to do, which is to come to school and learn like you want to. So thank you for being here tonight.
And thank you, Dr. Daddy Rogers. Dr. Flores?
I would just like to ask you, I didn't quite hear, was it the teacher that made fun of you?
No, it was another student.
It was the other students? Okay, that made fun of you. I had a hard time hearing you, so I need to clarify. And it made you feel bad, right?
Yeah.
And, and so, and then did the teacher intervene at all?
The teacher didn't know about anything.
Oh, the teacher didn't know about it? Okay. All right. And did you report it to anybody?
No.
No? Okay. All right. So it's unacceptable for kids to make fun of other kids. You know, it's not, it's not appropriate behavior and it's hurtful. So thank you for coming.
I want to make sure that you, you heard what she said. She wasn't the only one that was made fun of. There were other kids who were made fun of.
I couldn't hear Ms. Negretti.
And put their mask back on because they were made fun of.
Okay.
So it's not her being the only victim. So this bullying thing that was supposed to be one-sided, it's not. And so the trauma comes to them, because they know their God-given gift, that mask has never protected anybody. And you guys were adamant to protect those who were going to keep the mask. Right here, repeatedly, we heard several of you say, hey, you know what? If they decide to remove the mask, what's, what are going to be the consequences? So when the kids said, you know what? We're going to trust God. This is what we're going to do. But it's never been reinforced at the school. They said it once, oh, okay, it's optional. And so there it goes. So then we have a child who's hurt, who felt ridiculed, and the best way to avoid it is, let's just put our masks back on. We have kids putting their masks back on, because those who are doing the bullying are not being addressed. And don't tell me that other adults aren't hearing this, that they need to go and tell somebody, so that then they can again be harassed because they went and told an adult. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Negretti. All right. Our next public comment and speaker is Ms. Fatima Adame. Welcome.
Good evening, Board President, Superintendent, trustees, and community members. My name is Fatima Cristerna Adame with the California Charter Schools Association. We represent the majority of the 1,300 charter schools in the state of California. Here tonight, because I did hear some of the questions that you all had in your board meeting last week, and I wanted to address some of them. And I did provide a more detailed letter earlier today with links to the appropriate education code that I'm going to be referencing. But my comments tonight, I really want to reiterate that charter schools are still public schools that are free and open to all, that hasn't changed. We are still governed by state and federal laws, just like all traditional public schools are, and must abide by all education code unless specified. And like I mentioned, I provided several links to the California Department of Ed, Cal, ed facts. A charter school may not discriminate nor can it charge tuition, according to Education Code 47605. A charter school must have credential teachers in all core subjects. Teachers in charter schools should hold a commission on teacher credentialing certificate, permit, or other documents equivalent to that which a teacher in other public schools would be required to hold, Education Code 47605. Charter schools must admit all students who wish to attend the school. However, if a number of students exceeds the school's capacity, attendance shall be determined by public random drawing. Certain attendance preferences are available under state law, and they're outlined in every charter school's petition, Education Code 47605E2. Enrollments of students with disabilities in charter school. When a charter school is its own independent LEA, members of the SALPA for special education purposes, the charter school is solely responsible for implementing all state and federal special education requirements and for complying with all applicable laws, regulations pertaining to students with disabilities. Students with disabilities enrolled in charter schools must receive services that are the same manner to the same extent as traditional schools. That's 34 Code Federal Regulation Section 300.209. To ensure that adequate resources are available, monies apportioned to those purposes for special education must be expanded exclusively for the special education programs, Education Code 56836.04. To provide some small context, all charter schools approved by San Bernardino City Unified previously belonged to the District SALPA for special education services. Over time, the district increased the cost of those services along with encroachment fees, but the quality of service did not meet the needs of some of our charter schools, which led to several of them seeking outside SALPA options. Outside SALPAs are membership-based, which is why not all charter schools belong to the same SALPA. A charter school must apply to belong to a SALPA based on various factors such as cost and services, but a SALPA can and does reject applications, and the school must either reapply or apply to a different SALPA, depending on the timing. There are also charter SALPAs like Desert Mountain that have specific SALPAs for charter schools. But again, not all charter schools are accepted, and I provided a link to that information. SALPA support services align with the state and federal laws to inform best practices and empower student-focused decision-making. The work in collaboration with members, member charter schools to provide educational opportunities for all students with disabilities and serve as a resource to the community. SBCUSD also had several schools who still belong to the District SALPA but have MOUs that allow them to provide their own services directly without an added encroachment fee, which is why the report may say special education service provided by ex-charter school. As for the encroachments owed by various schools, all are making the appropriate payments necessary to the district, as well as their 1% oversight fee or 3%, depending on the charter school. No charter school overseen by your district has avoided making any required payments to the district, either for oversight or special education encroachment fees. In closing, charter schools overseen by you are following all applicable laws and understand the responsibility to remain free and public to all. Should you have any further questions or assistance, I provided my contact information, but anyone can call me at my cell phone number, 909-200-0533. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cristernada, and we do have questions, I think, for you.
I just wanted to say thank you for some of the clarification. I did see the email. Thank you for those links as well. And it was, it would have been, it was very useful, especially with some of the questions I had at the last board meeting, and just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you. I apologize, it's hard to answer those in real time, because you're not allowed to take comments. Thank you.
Ms. Cristernada, same for me. I haven't had a chance to read your email, I apologize. But just hearing your public comment right now, sounds like you provide us a lot of information, and we did have a lot of questions. And, you know, we're seeking clarification as well. A lot of questions on that SALPA.
Yes, and I didn't want to speak to individual schools.
No, I appreciate that. Thank you.
But I just spoke to overall.
Thank you. And I know there were a lot of questions we were seeking information on. And again, thank you for being here this evening and sharing it with us.
Thank you for having me.
And putting it in writing, too. That makes it easy, and we can click on the links, too. So thanks again.
Thank you.
Ms. Cunningham, did we have some online public comments?
We don't.
Oh, we do not? Okay, well, that is it for public comments, and thank you, everyone who came to make comments to us and informing us on many issues. We'll be going back to 4.0, closed session. And then 4.1, do we have any closed session public comments?
No, we do not.
All righty, and then 4.2, closed session, a general will be going to closed session. Thank you. Welcome back, everyone. Thank you for being patient with us. We're going to go ahead and move through the agenda, and hopefully we get through this in a pretty decent amount of time. And we'll be coming back on 5, 5.0, act reported from closed session, 5.1. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approves settlement agreement number SS-21-backslash-22- hyphen-02 in the amount of $19,600.
So moved.
I was moved by Dr. Flores, and I think seconded by Vice President Danny Tillman. Any discussion? All right, let's go ahead and move forward and vote. All right, motion carries. Move on to 5.2, expulsion of students. Be it resolved, the Board of Education accepts and adopts the recommendation and findings of the hearing panel, based on a review of the panel's findings and facts and recommendations, and orders the expulsion of following students with identification number as listed below in accordance with the board rules and regulations and compliance with Education Code Section 48900. So moved. It's been moved and properly seconded by Dr. Flores. Any discussion? All right, let's vote. Okay, motion carries. We'll move on to 5.3. Be it resolved, the Board of Education accepts and adopts the recommendation and findings and facts of positive youth development and orders the suspension or expulsion of the following students with identification number as listed below in accordance with the board rules and regulations and in compliance with Education Code Section 48900. A move.
Second.
All right, it's moved by Dr. Daddy Rogers, seconded by Vice President Mr. Tillman. Any discussion? All right, let's go ahead and vote. All right, motion carries. We'll move on to 5.3. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approves the following students were recommended for suspension, but the suspension was deemed inappropriate based on due process errors, insufficient evidence, and/or the availability of other means of corrections in compliance with Education Code 48900. Therefore, although they were recommended for suspension, the suspension was reversed or modified. A move. It's been moved and properly seconded by Dr. Daddy Rogers. Any discussion?
4.5.4, right?
5.4, that is correct. All right, let's vote. Motion carries. We'll move on to 5.5. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approves the following student was recommended for expulsion, but expulsion is deemed inappropriate based on due process errors, insufficient evidence, and/or the availability of other means of corrections in compliance with the Education Code Section 48900. Therefore, although they were recommended for expulsion, expulsion is not granted. A move.
Second.
It's been moved by Vice President Tillman, seconded by Dr. Flores. Any discussion? Let's vote. All right, motion carries. 5.6, other closed session action. There are no other closed session actions. We'll move on to 6.0, reports by union organizations, starting with 6.1, San Bernardino Teachers Association. They don't have any comment tonight? Well, thank you, Vice President Tillman. We'll move on to 6.2, California School Employees Association. Welcome. Thank you for being patient with us. No, little.
There we go.
There we go.
Hello. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, President Wyatt, board members, Superintendent Irvin, and the Cabinet. My name is Juanita Upshaw, the Chapter Treasurer for CSCA San Bernardino 183. I am also the proud SBCUSD Classified Employee of 16 years, working as a computer operations technician in the Information Technology Department. Tonight, I come before you on behalf of 2,000 members. Tonight, I'll be reporting out the recent negotiations between CSCA and the district. We've been quite busy negotiating a number of things. First, abolishments and reductions. As of January 1st, 2022, thanks to Assembly Bill 438, most classified employees finally have the same layoff rights as certified, certificated, and administrative colleagues with the same March 15th layoff notice and hearing rights regardless of job title. We have been in negotiations with the district regarding most recent classified abolishment and reductions list since March 1st. Thankfully, HR Classified Director Alexis Jenks has assured us that since we've already passed the March 15th deadline, no classified employees will be laid off. Rather, the affected classified employees of abolished positions will either be transferred to another site, or the district will fund the position for the employee's current work site. We would also like to thank Alexis and her team for providing us with the requested data regarding classified positions, so that we can make well-informed decisions. We have had some differences in opinion on a few positions, but we're working through them. We will meet again with the district tomorrow, where we will hopefully come to a final agreement. Second, vacation payout. There's been an ongoing issue with classified employees not using their vacation leave, and therefore has accumulated over the years. Then COVID hit, everyone had to work from home, therefore, there was no real reason to use their vacation leave, so the balances kept increasing. Both CSCA and the district have been meeting to resolve this issue since February 7th. As of December, we have 668, 678 classified employees with over 30 hours of unused vacation, which is over the allotted carryover. We have even, we have many more employees with over 70 hours, and some with well over 100 hours of vacation on the books. It's not that the classified employees don't want to use their vacation, but rather, they want to provide the best customer service to the students and to the district. Not only that, as you all are aware of, they are shorthanded at the school sites, so therefore, they don't have the necessary help to be able to take that time off. CSCA and the district have been collaborating to come up with a plan to bring down these vacation balances, and we should be arriving at an agreement shortly. Third, our successor agreement. The CSCA Collaborative Bargaining Agreement Initial Proposal for the 2022 to 2025 successor negotiations was approved by the school board at the last meeting on April 5th. The past several negotiation sessions for other MOUs and even our re-opener agreement have only been but for a few hours each, which stretches out the process and does not allow for enough time for each team to caucus, reconvene, and, and continue to negotiate and discuss. CSCA is therefore requesting for full days of negotiation sessions for our successor contract. We understand the high demands of all district employees at this time of year, but if we can get some dates on the calendar ASAP, that would be great. Lastly, state testing is underway, and I'd love to give a huge shout out to all classified employees who are assisting with proctoring the test, as well as the computer techs at the school sites, and the entire staff of the Information Technology Department for making sure that the technology and networking is up and running for the students to be successful in their state testing. And that's all I have to report on for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a good evening. Question? Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. We did have a question.
Yes.
Thank you very much. And from one IT person to another, thank you for all your hard work. We appreciate you. You mentioned the, the hours of vacation time that are over the limit. What is the, the number of vacation hours you can carry? What's the maximum?
Off the top of my head, there, it varies on nine-month, 10-month, 11-month, and 12-month employees. Nine-month employees can carry over, I believe it's 10 days of vacation. 10 and 11.
That's 80, that's 80 hours?
Yes.
Okay.
10, I'm not sure if 10-month employees are the same, but 11- and 12-month employees are allowed to carry over 15 days of vacation. 12-month employees do have the option of carrying over 25 days of vacation if they request it from their supervisor as well as HR. And they have to have proof that they're actually going to be using, utilizing their vacation in that upcoming school year.
You said 25?
Yes, and that's the max.
That's like 200 hours? Okay. And, and you brought it up because you think it should be higher, or you're just?
No.
Okay. You're just talking about you guys are working through it?
Yes. We've noticed that it's been an ongoing issue for years and years and years, and the district agreed with us that we need to fix, yeah, we need to fix this issue.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Sure thing.
All righty, thank you again. All right, 6.3, Communication Workers of America.
Yes, good evening, Honorable.
Good evening.
Good evening, good evening. This is Teresa Hunter with CWA 9588, representing guest teachers in San Bernardino City Unified School District. We're just here this evening just to, just to remind everyone, of course, that summer school is coming quickly, and we have a whole lot of guest teachers that are real excited this year to help with summer school and help our scholars. So that's all we have to add for this evening. Everyone, take care and be safe.
Thank you, Ms. Hunter. Good to see you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. 6.4, San Bernardino School Police Officers Association. All righty, no report. Thank you very much. 7.0, reports and comments. 7.1, board members. And we will be starting with Dr. Flores, and then moving to my left.
Thank you, Dr. Wyatt. I just wanted to start, I have about three things to say or comment. I wanted to recognize the multilingual department because Ms. Applegate, you went to New York, invited by the College Board. Board, I don't know if you know this, but there's only two dual-language high schools in the whole state of California, and San Bernardino High is one of them. So that deserves an applause. And she went to represent us, and I'm so, I'm honored because this board had a vision to expand our bilingual programs to junior high, then to high school. And, and as you can tell, we're one of two. And so that's in the whole state. So we're a model program. And just want to thank all the teachers, the multilingual department, and also you, Ms. Applegate. And, and I think Mr. Tillman was on the board when 227 hit, but the board decided not to fold our bilingual programs. And I was one of the parent advocates. I don't know if you remember. But we were the only district in the Inland Empire that did not fold. We kept our bilingual programs. And so, given Superintendent Thurmond's campaign and initiative on literacy and biliteracy, we are probably one of the model districts in the state in terms of biliteracy and bilingualism. So, anyway, I just wanted to congratulate us and the multilingual department. Secondly, I attended D-LAC along with Dr. Rogers, and they are very productive. They have a new leadership. They thank the old leadership. And, and they're very, they have a tight, a tight agenda, and I know some of the cabinet was on there too, so it was, they're doing really well. And then I wanted to add, given the parents that came today about their daughter that was accosted by the three little boys, I, I'd like to recommend, President Wyatt, that the Subcommittee, Policy Committee, review the discipline consequences regarding violent acts and bodily harm to fellow students. I, I would like us to review it. I don't know if the rest of the board agrees or not. Can we get consensus? I would like us to just review it to see if it, in fact, what the parents were saying is true, or just for us to review. What do you think?
I would, I would say that's right now up to the Board Policy Subcommittee. I know that they have a lot on their plate, and I don't, not that I'm marginalizing this concern because it is huge, but I just, I just want to be respectful to the Board Policy Subcommittee because it seems like you guys are working a lot, a lot.
Yeah, but it's important. That goes under you, right, Dr. Rodriguez? Is that under you?
For the discipline, yes. And actually, we're going to be reviewing one of the updated policies around suspension and expulsion is part of that today. That's 9.24.
Okay, so we are, that's on the docket?
Sounds like we're on our way then.
Thank you.
Perfect.
And then lastly, I just wanted to, I meant to the children's books lightly, and Sí se puede, Yes We Can, The Janitor's Strike in L.A. by Diana Kohn, illustrated by Francisco Delgado, in honor of our resolution for the Labor Month is, is what I brought to share today in terms of that. And I've been reading, I ordered like over 25 books about women, scientists, mathematicians, and engineers. So this is on Catherine Johnson, who put astronauts on the moon, and, you know, it's Hidden Figures, and it's a children's book, and it's just awesome about her contribution, and John Glenn, the astronaut, refused to fly unless Catherine okayed the numbers. Here's another one by Cherokee woman, Mary Golda Ross, who's an aerospace engineer, and she did all kinds of aerodynamics structures and was on the ground floor at Lockheed Missiles in Space, and you can't, they won't even tell you what she did because it's still secret. And here's another one. I don't know if you know this, but Hedy Lamar, the beautiful actress, was not just a movie star. She was an inventor, and she invented innovative technology called frequency hopping. It co-invented it. It was designed to prevent the enemy from jamming torpedo radio signals and commanding weapons to go off course. Frequency hopping is still used today to keep our cell phone messages private and defend our computers from hackers. I mean, there's a whole book on her. It's so, anyway.
All right.
In terms of mathematicians, and our girls need to know that women rock. Okay.
Yes, they do. Thank you very much. Vice President Tillman.
Thank you very much, President Dr. Wyatt. I had a parent leave my job, they had a child at one of our schools that was coughing, and the school nurse did a great job, called him out. But the concern I have, when they got there, they weren't allowed to have the student do a COVID test unless they signed this COVID-19 student testing consent opt-out form. And the only box you can check is, I grant permission for my child to participate in COVID-19 student testing for the 2021, 2022 school year, or I do not grant permission for my child to participate in the COVID-19. If you might know, they won't allow you to test the student on campus. And I thought we said we were going to allow students to continue being tested on campus without having to do this opt-in to the participation. So maybe we can agendaize it and, because I know specifically, you guys sent something out in the parent square and the whole nine yards, but at this site, they have a form saying, and didn't allow the parent, the parent had to take the kid home because they wouldn't allow the parent to test the student at the school, even though they wanted the student to be tested unless they opted into this testing and without parent's consent once you signed the form, so.
I have a clarifying question, sir.
Yes.
What school was that? Do we know?
Ramona Alessandro.
Ramona Alessandro. Okay, I'll look into that.
Thank you very much. And then, Dr. Flores, I just want to make sure we give credit where credit is due. The person that led the charge on the bilingual direction that we took at that time was Dr. Elsa Valdez, as you know. And so, we took, they passed a law saying you didn't have to spend the money for the programs, but we had Dr. Valdez assemble other experts to determine what was best for those students, and that's the direction that we took. We didn't let state law and other stuff dictate it. We did what was the best for the students, and ended up being successful. And then finally, I want to thank the district staff for doing an amazing job with the fine arts and the music programs. I was able to see some performances, and there's just been amazing, the work that we're doing. And I just, you know, I took, I took a percussion when I was in the third grade. And I can remember when my son was in school before I got on the board, they had ended it. And my son actually had started the program in third grade. Because of budget cuts, they cut it. I had to pay, I paid for private lessons for him to continue through middle school, so when he got to high school, he could participate in the high school band. So it's just wonderful to see us going back to third graders taking music lessons and all the benefits that has been proven that come with that. We're doing an amazing job, and it's something that the parents and the community really do appreciate. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice President Tillman. Ms. Myra Saviles?
Did you say Ms. Saviles?
I said Ms. Myra Saviles, actually.
Sorry. Thank you so much. So just really quickly, I do want to, you know, piggyback off on Dr. Flores and congratulate the multilingual department, as a whole, and Ms. Applegate as well. I also would like to send a shout out to Mr. Lawrence Hardy, Program Specialist at the ESSA Department. I heard that they had a really great event this past weekend over at Pacific High School where they were, you know, sharing and passing out free foot locker shoes to the high school students there. Also, I want to go ahead and say congratulations to Royal Valley High School. I heard that they're receiving an award from the Great Schools, their College Success Award. They're being highlighted for successful high school, high schools, they're highlighting successful high schools across the nation for their best practices and celebrate exceptional schools based on their college, college, college success. Sorry. And they would like to feature Royal Valley as one of four high schools nationwide because they're focusing on schools with robust academic pathway programs. So congratulations to Mr. Vanzuela, principal over there, and to their whole team as well. And then just back to my kind of like running list that I have here, just like to remind us to, you know, potentially bring back an item on developing a policy to establish board meeting end times. Call for a policy to provide guidance for special education independent evaluation plans. The state currently does not provide a timeframe for that, but we could create direction for sped for that in addition to translating their documents. I know that we aim to do 10 days. Currently, I think we stand at 30. But sometimes, our parents need to be able to understand fully what they're going to be signing on those special ed documents, and 30 days if a student qualifies and a parent doesn't sign right away, the student cannot receive services, as we already know. So the sooner that that happens for them to be able to make informed decisions for their students, the better. Also, I would like to bring back potentially an item, agenda item, to having a sitting attorney at every meeting. Remind us that I have also requested the final report on the after-school program providers. And then a more recent one. So I'm having more and more concerns as the months go by in regards to our ability to spend the money in a timely manner. So we do have a lot of one-time monies coming in, and I don't know that we have fully, you know, discussed where that's going. And so now I'm getting a little bit more anxious, you know, as time goes by because I need to know where we are and where we stand on that to be able to give direction, to be able to go ahead and spend that money before the deadline comes. And I think that's it.
Thank you very much, Ms. Saviles. Dr. Dottie Rogers?
Thank you. And I will also start out with a shout out to our growing hope over at San Andreas. They were featured in EdTech. It's just so many wonderful things that are going on throughout, and so we'll get our little text messages or invites to those. So we appreciate that. So shout out to you guys for letting us know that it's going on. On another note, I did get the opportunity to speak with some of our recades, and apparently, and this is, this is kind of like a sensitive factor, and I don't want the audience to think that it happens all the time, but we do know that oftentimes there are individuals that may run across our campuses in pursuit of something that is taking place outside of our campus. But I don't know under, who this is under, but just the training, the recades want to make sure that they have the training on what the procedures are, and the lockdown, what takes place with the students as well, because apparently there were some frantic students, you know, and it's a nerve-wracking thing, I'm sure, because you don't know what's happening. But when we talk about safety, I think that's important, that we revisit those safety protocols as people move or may go to a different site and be assigned that that training should be ongoing and consistent because it does come up. And that is for our recades, and then also, I don't know what we do for our students, but also if you can put that on the radar and get back to us on that. I also wanted to ask the question in reference to, I know that it, there was a conversation about leaning towards RFPs for CAT providers, and I, for lack of a better word, I'll call it the bidders conference, which is where you say you want. I don't know what we're calling it here at the district, but the county, that's what they call it, for those individuals. And I think, Dr. Rodriguez, you might have mentioned, there may be an additional date because a couple people are saying they missed it, or even, even they didn't know at the time, right? So new providers are trying to figure out how do they gain access. So I don't know if we'll be offering out another date that will be shared out publicly.
Oh, may I respond?
Sure.
Yes, there will be another additional date, and that's due to needing more providers than when we had initially sent it out. So information will be sent, it'll be placed in the newspaper. If people have questions, they can call our purchasing department, Deborah Love, for more information.
That's exactly what I needed. So great that that information is out there, and then we know where to direct them as well that are asking those questions. And then also, I wanted to mention again, too, shout out to you, Ms. Applegate. We saw you all over the Big Apple. But a great job on that. But I do want to mention again, because, you know, our dual immersion program, we talked about it quite some years ago, about expanding that, right, as well. And I know it is one pipeline going, but I'd like to see us, you know, I want biliteracy for all, but that dual immersion program, if we can pipeline it or look at that in the near future, I hope that we're looking to expand on that as others are just beginning because we have seen the success of that program. So thank you for representing that. And then lastly, I do want to say, I didn't get a chance to say it last board meeting, but shout out to Chief Polino and their heartfelt effort of what they did by highlighting our Dr. Margaret Hill sticker on there that just went kind of viral, and everyone really applauded that. So, so thank you so much for doing that. And those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dottie Rogers. And we are now to Ms. Rosales Medina.
And in recognition with Dr. Hill, she would always advocate or at least read a resolution. I think, I don't know if we've had resolutions with regarding to Earth Day, which is Friday, April the 22nd. And looking at, for those that do not know, Earth Day Annual Celebration Honoring the Achievements of the Environmental Movement and Raising Awareness of the Importance of Long-Term Ecological Sustainability. So just wanted to say Happy Earth Day for those celebrating it on April the 22nd. And then as we're talking about multilingualism and dual immersion and dual languages, San Bernardino High School is the one that has the program, right? Just to clarify. I know in previous times, we've had students come to the board and speak on the program. So I would love, in order to market and advocate for those that may be interested in, in learning more how they can get involved, parents or students, maybe in earlier years, if we can have them come and speak and talk about the program as a way to also encourage others to join. And with that, I also want to bring in back or have a conversations with the policy with A through G. I know we had it last time, and I think it was put in pause for a moment. But that also adds the language component to the A through G. So I do want to revisit that because as we're looking at with multilingualism, bilingualism, it is something that private schools do, and if those that have the means do it, why not us? If it's an opportunity we can provide to expand it, would like to look at that as well. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rosales Medina. And I think that, that'll be me next. Always tough going last because your colleagues get to pick off a lot of the good stuff, but that's okay because we love the good stuff that's happening in our district. Wow, and I actually have quite a list, so I'm gonna try to make it my five minutes. Go ahead, Karen, start that clock. Just kidding. Just a lot of shout-outs this week for amazing things that our students are doing in our district. And like I said many times up here and many of my colleagues, our districts compete with anybody, and I mean anybody, anywhere, anytime. And here's a couple examples of some of our outstanding students. Cohone High School Track and Field Star Seth Johnson won the High School Boys Pentathlon, that's a word I'm not even familiar with, at the Nike Indoor Nationals in New York. Nike Indoor Nationals. I don't know if you guys knew that, but that's as good as it gets in regards to high school track and field, and that's right here in our backyard at Cohone High School. Continued at Cohone High School, Kohn Lady Softball Sophomore Pitcher Jada Villegas tossed two shutouts against Beaumont and Rev High Schools. Jada was selected as a press inter- Jada was selected as a Press Enterprise Inland Girls Athlete of the Week. So great job, Jada. Our art showcase was last night, our VAPA art showcase was last night at the Orange Show, and myself and a number of cabinet members were there, Dr. Marades, Dr. Funches, Ms. Anteberos, as well as our phenomenal art team. It was outstanding, first of all, just the work that our students produce is, again, amazing. It took a lot of pictures, and we were able to put together a display and some artwork that'll be at the Making Hope Happen Foundation. So Keith, who's in charge of the art program over at Royal High School, thank you for doing that in less than 24 hours. That's efficiency at its best, so well done. And I think we heard a little bit about it earlier, our district's music program was recognized for the second year in a row with the Best Communities for Music Education Award. We are only district in Samuel County to receive that distinction, and only one of two in the entire inland empire. So again, huge shout out to our VAPA team, continue to do the outstanding work. Met with city council to support them on establishing their, I think it's their student, city council member program. Each ward will have a, a student from our high schools participate, similar to what we need to reinstitute again here, city council member, like an internship. So Kimberly Calvin, thank you again for leading the charge on that and making that happen. Dr. Funches was there as well to show unanimous support for their program and to collaborate with our city and work together. I also asked them to reestablish our bridge committee. I know we've talked about a lot, that a lot up here, but talk is cheap, we need to have actions, we need to set up a, a meeting and make that happen. So, you know, if we're gonna move the city, we gotta work together as one unit. Middle College High School, thank you for the invitation for the inaugural National Honor Society Ceremony, which was this past week, and it was a pleasure to be there and to speak. For those of you that don't know, the National Honors Society recognizes students not for their only academic achievement, but more importantly, for their service to their community. And so we had our inaugural ceremony at Middle College High School with a number of high school seniors and juniors who were selected for that distinguishing honor. So great job again to our students and staff for making that happen. You know, we talked a little bit about our Growing Hope Program over at San Andreas, and I just got a text message not too long ago, they were in EdTech Focus Magazine, EdTech Focus on K-12 Magazine. So our, our program again was recognized nationally in a, you know, a program journal that's out there that focuses on EdTech. So amazing job. And then they'll, they'll also be celebrating Earth Day, Ms. Rosales Medina, as our Growing Hope Program at a local, I don't know what to call it, a local, I don't want to say restaurant, but a local place, I'll just leave it at that.
Send me the flyer.
Yeah, we got a flyer that, you know, I know none of us will, will do our best job to go and support them. I think it's this Friday, April 22nd, from 3:00 to 7:00. I look forward to seeing our folks and our folks in action over there. And I just want to say thank you to all the students for just the wonderful thank yous to us. You know, I got two thank you cards up here, a bunch of thank you letters, a thank you email. Wow, I, that, that really just, it touches my heart and it motivates me for us to continue to work as a board in the district and moving forward and supporting our kids. So those are my comments. Thank you. All right, move on to 7.2, Superintendent Staff. Superintendent Irvin.
All the stuff I was gonna talk about, it's already been talked about, so, but I will say there's a couple of things that we didn't touch on. Assemblywoman Eloise Gomez Reyes has selected Jamie Rios, a bilingual outreach worker at San Bernardino High School, as a finalist for the 47th Assemblyman of the Year Award. So really, congratulations to Jamie. Also, I think, I'm not sure if we mentioned this, I think you did mention this, but our district was named 2022 Best Community in Music Education. Yeah, yeah, we're, yeah, well, you already mentioned that, but we say that again. Also, I take a moment to acknowledge Board Member Dr. Gwen Dottie Rogers for her appointment by the Board of Supervisors for the County of San Bernardino to serve on the Board of the Children's and Family Commission, otherwise known as First Five. Also, we want to congratulate Dr. Rogers on her recent recognition as distinguished alumni for, of the San Bernardino Valley College during their gala earlier this month, and she's also going to be honored in May with the Margaret Hill Lifetime Commitment Award by the Young Visionaries Organization at their gala on May 20th. So, and then lastly, speaking of galas, the Making Hope Foundation will have their gala this year at the historic Arrowhead Springs Resort, and that's gonna be on May 12th this year. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Superintendent Irvin, and to our staff as well. We'll move on to 8.0, action items. 8.1, Approval Personnel Report Number 18, dated April 19th, 2022, which contains actions such as hiring, retirements, resignations, promotions, and terminations.
As presented.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded by Dr. Dottie Rogers. Any discussion? All right, let's vote. All right, motion carries. Move on to 8.2, Resolution in Support of the Use of Savings on Other Higher-Priority Capital Outlay Projects.
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? All right, motion carries. 8.3, approve assigning a CDS code for the Virtual Academy, which is pretty exciting.
Second.
It's been moved by Vice President Tillman, second by Dr. Flores.
Any discussion?
I just want to say this is a great move on our part, and it will be really, really valuable to our community, so.
Absolutely, Dr. Flores, I agree. We'll get that CDS code number, and then, well, I'm sure WASC accreditation's in right after that. All right, any other comments? Let's vote. All right, motion carries. We'll move on to 9.0, consent items.
Moved.
Second. And I'd like to pull one.
All righty, Dr. Flores, it was moved properly second.
9.9, just for clarification.
9.9, any others to be pulled?
9.5 and 9.25.
9.5 and 9.25. Any others?
And Dr. Wyatt, on 9.23, it's a first reading, which it looks kind of weird for me because it's in that section, but I just wanted to add something in there, so I'll pull it to ask a question.
Absolutely.
It's the suicide prevention reading?
That's a reading.
I know. I thought it's normal, is that, is that normal?
No.
Because wouldn't they be separate?
Yeah.
I don't know, and that's why, when I saw it in there, I was like, whoa.
Normally, they're not in consent.
That's what, I didn't think so.
Well, thanks for bringing that up, and we'll definitely pull that.
Yeah, they should be, it's three, it's, is it three in there?
I don't know.
Okay, because I want to talk about the readings. Okay. So bring up, so, so I want to pull that one.
Yeah, absolutely. No, thank you for bringing that up. All right, any others? So we have 9.5, 9.9, 9.23, 9.25. All righty, let's go ahead and vote on the consent items as amended. All right, motion carries. Let's move on to 9.5, Facility Use Agreement. Oh, sorry there, I see Mr. Tillman is leaving the room. All right, 9.5, Facility Use Agreement with Savant Preparatory Academy, Savant Preparatory Academy of Business Charter School. It's a facility use agreement to relocate Savant Charter School to the District's Community Day School CDS site.
So moved.
Second.
It's moved by Dr. Flores, properly seconded by Dr. Dottie Rogers. Any discussion?
Just a quick question.
Yes.
Is that space currently vacant, or?
Matt, well, if staff wants to answer it, I can, but staff wants to answer, go ahead and.
Yes, it's currently not vacant. We're actually going to be moving the Virtual Academy over to Double Aho. We're just flip-flopping the site.
Okay, I'm sorry. So the Virtual Academy is going to be moving to?
Double Aho.
And then?
Savant will be moving to the CDS campus.
And the CDS was occupied by who?
By Virtual Academy.
Okay, got it.
We're just swapping them.
I'm sorry, I'm all confused. So currently, it's being occupied by Virtual Academy.
Correct.
They're moving to Del Vallejo.
Correct.
Oh, got it, got it. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All righty, and, and I.
And just wanted to, okay, I didn't turn my light on.
I know, I didn't either. I will, I will defer to you first.
I, I just want, I just want to say, you know, I'm glad this, this process, and I know that our superintendent delved right in, and, you know, we were all given input on it, and he had some conversations. But I do want to make sure we've had the conversations that we need to have and just not assume, you know, because we're, you know, kind of did it a little bit different with our students, just to make sure that those conversations are there. Because I definitely, definitely would be disheartened to know, and, and we hear after the fact that we, you know, find ourselves in the same place where, you know, we ended up. So that is the, the, just please tell me that conversations have been had, everyone's on the same page, and that they can get it out, whatever concerns that they may have. We just want to do this appropriately. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dottie Rogers, and I was just gonna say something similar to that. And also thank our team, our team for, you know, making this happen and working closely with Savant. And, you know, this has been a discussion for a couple of years at least, probably about three or four years. And, you know, we've heard our staff, we've heard our community, we also have heard Savant loud and clearly. And again, this is one of those things that the board has supported and our staff and getting it done. So thank you to all involved. If there is no further discussion, let's vote. All right, motion carries. With Mrs. Tillman abstaining, we will move on to 9.9. If somebody could let Mr. Tillman know to come back in, we'll move on to 9.9. Professional Service Agreement with Arthur Consulting and Management Incorporated for School Facility Program in an amount of $2,300,000.
Yes, I, I just wanted Mr. Sullins to give us an update of how that was. I had called him, and I, well, I had a question about if there was a bid, and so I'd like him to explain why there wasn't a bid, yeah.
Certainly. Thank you, Dr. Flores. So for professional specialized services, they are exempt from the procurement bidding process due to the highly specialized services and services that they provide, which include professional advice related to the matters at hand. So, but however, our facilities teams, as part of their due diligence, did not simply select a single entity. They actually reviewed this, this organization as well as five other agencies for past performance with the district and others, the price. And I would share that if you compare this to our current agreement, to our current provider, this, over this, this two-year period of the contract, is expected to save us almost $900,000. Those $900,000 can be utilized to support other facility needs within the district.
And, and this is for two years, right?
This is two years.
For two years, and they do all the, the, the work with permits and all of the things?
Program management and planning, yes. So these are specialized services. So where we would not.
They're like project management.
Correct. Exactly. So where we would not be able to sort of go through this process would be the actual construction-related services, those are required to be bid.
Okay, thank you. So moved.
Oh, wait, wait, we got, we got further discussion, but thank you, Dr. Flores. Vice President Tillman.
And Dr. Flores, thanks for bringing it up. Although there are things like this, including construction management, where you don't have to, it's still a good idea, too. When I first got on the board, there was a, just a unwritten rule that you didn't go out for bid for construction management. And they have been using the same company for years and didn't give other companies, even locally, the chance to bid on it. So if there are companies that want to have the ability to bid on the, some of these contracts, then it's, it's, it's critical that we allow that to happen. You know, a lot of times when we go out for bonds and those type of things, it's good to make sure people realize that they have access to get that business. You can't say, hey, pass the bond, and you'll be able to get a chance at the work, and then not give them the chance to get to work once the bond has been passed. So I'm glad that you brought it up, and if there are.
Are you recommending that we should go out for bid next time?
What I'm saying is, yeah, if there are people out there who are asking to have access to the business, I think you have to have a fair process. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Tillman.
Dr. Wyatt, just a comment.
Oh, yes, sorry.
So, agree wholeheartedly with that point, and so that is why this contract is for two years, and so the plan is to go out for the competitive process going forward.
All right, thank you, Ms. Sullins, thank you, everyone, for the questions.
Thank you, Mr. Sullins. So moved.
All right, it's been moved and properly seconded. Any other further discussion? All right, let's vote. All right, motion carries, and, you know, we have a say in my meetings, if your cell phone rings, you will sing. So we'll find out who that was in a little bit. Just kidding. All right, well, that was funny, though. 9.23, Board Policy 51, 41.52, Suicide Prevention First Reading, Dr. Dottie Rogers.
Sorry, mic is not on. I, I know there was, there's a lot of updates in here, and I know a lot of things came across as to what needed to be added in our policy. I just thought that if we're referencing to the hotline, we should put the number in there as well, the 800 number, because if they pull the policy, you know, if someone is looking at this, at least it is referenced in there as well. So the national, the national number.
President Wyatt, can I respond?
Dr. Dottie Rogers, you've done. Yes, Dr. Flores, and I have a comment to that.
We asked the same question. So I would like to ask, Dr. Rodriguez, why we don't have a 800 number in there?
Absolutely. We know that sometimes numbers change, and we know that sometimes board policies don't get updated as frequently as we would like.
You think the national, yeah, because it's a national number, and it's national suicide.
Yeah, so we can look at the national one, I think we were looking at the local one. Yeah, so, yes, we can add the national hotline.
All righty, was, Dr. Flores, were you good?
Yeah, I'm good, thank you.
And then, and I would just, I hate to say piggyback, because we do this a lot over here, but I'm gonna do it, it's not me, but, and I also, just to reiterate, and I know you already know this, but we also include, I don't know if it's our local or national hotline for suicide awareness on our school IDs as well. It's supposed to be on our school IDs, so is that correct? Yeah, we have a number of different emergency phone numbers on our school IDs that we probably should all be familiar with, but that is one of them, definitely.
Correct. Both supposed to be on the back of the, of the ID. I think that law was prior to COVID.
Correct.
Well, thank you all, those are great questions on that particular policy, and, you know, one that's extremely important.
And I'll verify it for the next time we have a meeting.
Thank you very much.
I'll verify that.
All right, let's go ahead and vote.
So moved.
Oh, I'm, I do apologize.
Second.
It was moved by Vice President Tillman, second by Dr. Flores. Any other further discussion? All right, let's vote.
Mr. Tillman?
Thank you.
All right, motion carries, and looking forward to the information coming back on that one. Nine point two five, new, new BP, Board Policy 5144.4, required parental attendance first reading.
I pulled that. I, I don't understand, this is a new policy, and what's the purpose of the policy?
So the purpose of the update is to be in compliance with CSBA, but in addition, we've added this because of our teacher suspensions, and so we want to make sure that we're not just removing kids from school, but that there's an alternative to have those students come back and can participate in, in classroom activities. So this basically says that we can, if a student is suspended from the classroom, we may have the parent come in to attend a portion of the day in the class from which the student was suspended.
I guess my, my concern is, is titled required parent attendance, so, and, and I know that all parents aren't alike, and so if a student has a parent that is not going to be conducive to this process, I just want to make sure that student is not hindered. I don't want to say, I don't want a policy that says the parent is required to attend something, and because they didn't, then the next thing is not going to happen, because...
Yeah, what we can do just for clarification?
I just wanted, just, the, the policy is titled required parental attendance. As soon as you say that, to me, it's a concern, because someone could read into that, that I have a tool that I can require a parent to be at this site, and even, it even costs you on, in here about, and it says, any teacher requiring parental attendance pursuant to this policy shall apply this policy uniformly to all students within the classroom. That, that concerns me, because it says, you know, shall apply the policy uniformly to all students. What does that mean? I, give me, just give me an example of how this will be applied.
So I think, if I may answer the question, if this language is not acceptable, this group can add language that states, in the event a parent is unavailable, then there may be some remedies. So we can add to this language in order to make sure that we can accommodate for those families that are unable to come.
And just from the perspective that a lot of students, and, and, and a lot of times it's the students that are having the most struggles, they're having the struggles because they don't have the right parental support at home. So I don't want to put something in place that compounds it, thinking that you're doing something good, and it's not.
Thank you, sir. What we'll do is, we will bring it back to the policy committee for a second reading to make the adjustments, and then we'll bring it back.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Tillman. Dr. Flores?
Thank you, Mr. Tillman, for making that obvious to us, and so that we'll, when we meet again in the, so Policy Committee will rework the language so that it says, you know, in case parents can't come, because I know sometimes they can't, they're working, or, or, like you said, you know, there isn't that, that support there, yeah.
Chaos.
Yeah, it's chaos, yeah, right. Thank you.
And just so I can be clear, because a lot of time the public is listening in, you know, I used to mentor students at Sierra, and there was more than one occasion where you actually had students living in a household without parents. Now, everything on paper showed a pub, a legal guardian, but once they got to be about 16 or 17 years old, it's normal for a lot of our students to be surviving on their own, and it's, it's not talked about, but it's a reality, and something like this would impose even more problems, because how do they tell you, I don't have a parent, and there is no parent to come? We got, I just want to make sure that we have workarounds for those type of situations. Thank you.
All righty, thank you again, and Dr. Daddy Rogers.
Just had the same question on it. Did you say it was new? Because when I seen it, I was like, whoa, what, what is?
This is new, and this is more for the teacher suspensions. Typically, teacher suspensions occur in elementary schools, occasionally in, in secondary, but mostly elementary. So basically, what this does is it, it kind of forces a parent-teacher conference, but I do understand what Mr. Tillman is saying. I agree, not every family has a situation where mom and dad are available, or even present, so we need to make adjustments for that.
Have to add some maze or something in there.
Or even maybe put in some language. Well, we'll work on it in board subcommittee.
And then the last question, because when I saw the title, too, is that a title we chose to call it? Required parent attendance?
I believe that's something that we put in to be in compliance with CSBA.
A word smithing on that as well. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Doctor, thank you, Dr. Daddy Rogers. Mr. Biels?
Yeah, so, thank you, Mr. Tillman, for pointing some, some of these things out. If I, if I remember correctly, and, you know, we'll go back and we'll revisit, but I would like to, I guess, also, when we do go back and revisit, so that we may give a feedback on it, the intention of why the policy is, is being implemented, and that doesn't have to be responded now, but on that second to last little sentence, any teacher requiring parental attendance pursuant to this policy shall apply the policy uniformly to all students within the classroom. I remember looking at that, and right now that Mr. Tillman brought it up, I was like, yeah, that's true, but then I remembered, because I read it and I had a similar question. Are you, is this trying to say that the teacher will apply the policy to all students, meaning it won't discriminate, you know, it won't apply it to some, but, but not all? If there is a teacher suspending a student from its classroom, then, am I, am I on the right tracks here?
Yes, but I think, you know, we, that's probably more discussion for the board subcommittee, but I'm thinking along the same lines as you're mentioning about the discrimination policy. We can't say that we're going to treat some kids different than others, but there does need to be an allowance for students who have issues, you know, with, with families not being present. So there's always an exception. We need to make sure that we put that into the policy.
Okay, no worries. We'll go back and relook at it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sabios.
Is she going to be tabled?
I, I, yeah, this is, this is a good one, I think, for further discussion, and, you know, thank you to the Board Policy Subcommittee for first draft on this. This is a tough one to tackle, so, but good discussion on it, really good questions, and Dr., I really thank you for the responses as well.
Dr. White, he mentioned the point, he's not going to bring it up, but I do think, and I thought about this, too, if there's some parents, for instance, if I have a parent who's a convicted sex offender, how do I make sure I'm not inviting that parent to the site?
Yeah, and, and, you know, thank you, Ms. Tillman, for, my sidebar shouldn't have that, but, and just parents in the classroom can also be a distraction, as we know, and, so there's a lot, I think, that needs to be said in regards to expectations of a parent when they come into the classroom, you know, as being a support and not a distraction or disruption, so.
Okay, I'll put that in, we'll put that into account. Okay.
Ms. Sabios, clarification?
Just really quickly, though, I do want to, you know, kind of point out, sometimes when it's teacher suspensions from the classroom, those usually don't get reported or get underreported, so it is important that parents are notified, right, and maybe it doesn't have to be through inviting them or whatnot. I just want to make sure that we're not kind of, you know, not thinking about that aspect of it.
No, great point, Ms. Sabios, and ed code has changed significantly in regards to even suspending a student, and student having an option to explain or rebut the suspension, and then it has to have principal approval, administrator approval as well, so. A lot of steps put in there to use other means of corrections for our students, because we want to keep them in school, not remove them from school. But great questions and very good discussion. All righty, anybody want to motion? All right, are we going to, we don't motion if we table?
Nope.
All right, so this one, we don't have to motion on, we'll table. Great discussion, and let me get back to make sure we covered them all. All right, that was nine point two five. Thank you very much. We'll move on to review of board requests, ten point one, staff will review items updated requested. Ms. Antiveros?
Evening, Board. Okay, this evening, the first request came from Dr. Barbara Flores, who was following up on the public comment requesting that the policy subcommittee review the discipline consequences regarding violent acts causing bodily harm. I think that, those were the terms that you specifically used, to make sure that we're addressing that discipline issue that was requested. Mr. Danny Tillman asked that we review the COVID opt-in, opt-out form, adding maybe a third option, it sounded like, for an opt-in only this time, right? Ms. Myra Sabios had a few reminders for us. She's reminding us that she's previously requested that the board consider a policy for meeting end times. She also requested or reminded about the policy that she's asked for related to the IEP turnaround timeframes, including translation. A reminder that we had an agenda item to consider, or she wanted to have an agenda item for the board to consider having an attorney present at all board meetings, and then also reminding that she's requested for a report on the after-school providers. Ms. Sabios then asked if we would report on details about the progress of spending one-time money that the district has received. The next one came from Dr. Gwen Doughty Rogers, who asked that we would consider training for staff and recades specifically regarding lockout lockdown procedures, also wanting to make sure students had some exposure to that as well. Dr. Doughty Rogers then also asked that we would consider some expansion to our dual immersion program. Ms. Abigail Rosales Medina asked if we would hear, would like to hear a presentation from the San Bernardino High School dual, dual immersion students as a way to hear about the program and also help them to promote enrollment in it. She also asked, and I think I captured this correctly, but you also asked to make sure we bring back the A to G policy around the foreign language requirement.
Yes, or at least have the subcommittee review it again, because of that extra language that can also promote, we can promote.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Mr. Danny Tillman asked that we would recommend that we request proposals for services to ensure that those who are interested can bid for those opportunities. Dr. Gwen Doughty Rogers asked that the suicide prevention policy add the national hotline phone number. Mr. Danny Tillman suggested that we consider changing the title of the required parental attendance policy to ensure that stu, and, and to ensure that in the language that students aren't penalized because parents cannot or do not attend. That was echoed by Dr. Gwen Doughty Rogers. And then there was also a request, I think it came from Ms. Myra Sabios, to ensure that teacher suspensions of class are always reported to students, or I mean, to the parents, so the parents are always informed about it when the teacher suspensions occur. And those were all the requests that I captured this evening.
And you probably left out this one, but Dr. Rodriguez did answer, but we want to make sure that it's going to be known to our, those that want to be cap providers, that they're going to be invited again to, but you probably put it, exactly.
I did, and I checked it off, because Sandra answered it, yes.
Yeah, she did, but we want to make sure it gets done.
Thank you, yes.
So, the, they're, they're having, individuals that want to be providers for caps, there's a timeframe, they can come in and get the information. One of those dates passed by, so they're going to do it again, so they can capture, mhm, so you got that.
Apps, okay. And thank you, Ms. Antiveros. And Board, we know we're at eleven point oh closing, but I'd like to ask, with your permission, that we end in a moment of silence. We've had a couple untimely and tragic deaths in our, our school community. One of our, our fondest and loved custodians at Cajon High School, Ms. Reynala Maris, and I, you know, I don't want us to forget her anytime soon. My son knew her and admired her tremendously. It kind of hurts when you hear that from your own child. And then we had to lay in arrest one of our students today from county schools, who was also one of our San Bernardino High School students, and that was Mr. DeMarcus Sua, who also had a very untimely and tragic death, so with your permission, if you don't mind, that we end in their honor.
Can we add the custodian, King also?
I'm sorry, I didn't even know that. Please, yes, Mr. Tillman, and do we know who that is, folks? Who is it? Oh, gosh, and do we have their name? I always like to recognize people by their names, so.
Let's do it at the next meeting, then.
Okay, okay, and we will definitely do that at the next meeting, and thank you, Vice President Tillman, for bringing that up, so if we can have a moment of silence, please. Thank you, everyone, and-
Move to adjourn?
We'll move to adjourn. It's been motion property second. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening. Did it before ten, and that was with a long closed session. We promise to shorten those closed sessions as well.